Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Please rise for the pledge.
Um.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Euclid Township Planning Commission Meeting, September sixth, two thousand twenty-three. This meeting is being held live and Zoom. There will not be any questions taken Zoom or online, only a person. With that, um, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our? July meeting?
July fifth meeting?
July meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections that they'd like to make?
Done. Okay, I move that we were that we um approve the July fifth minutes as written.
All right, I have motion. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
And now we'll move forward. Tonight, we have Tilson Infrastructure, AT&amp;T Pennsylvania Turnpike Exit three twelve. Downington Interchange. We have a discussion for conditional use recommendation for a wireless telecommunications facility. Who's here to represent them this evening?
Uh.
Hi.
Communications.
Now you can do the song, huh?
Yes. Um, my name is Doug Morrison. I'm with Pyramid Network Services out of Syracuse, New York, and I'm here appearing on behalf of Tilson Infrastructure, Inc. And AT&amp;T for the construction of a new unmanned wireless telecommunications facility located, as you can see at the Downington Exchange right off Pennsylvania Turnpike Route seventy-six. Um, this is a fairly straightforward project where um based upon your code uh in the town. Uh, it's permitted as it's located in a PIC land. I forget what the acronym stands for now.
Industrial.
Industrial, okay. Um. And we're looking for a hundred and sixty-foot tower total. The design right now in in these new designs, they typically put a four to ten-foot lightning rod on top. So. Some municipalities add that to the overall height of the structure. Some don't. It's. We all feel it's a necessity. We should do it just to protect the infrastructure of the tower and the surrounding area in case there was a lightning strike that happened close by. Um, most of the utilities that we will need for the project are already there. They'll just have to be run. We have a thirty-foot. Right now, we've we've met with the Pennsylvania. Obviously, we've met with the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission and and they've agreed to work with us to to lease a hundred by a hundred-foot area. Um, there's also a access road that we will be responsible for building. It'll be a thirty-foot wide easement with a in in inside of that will be a twelve-foot gravel access road, similar to what you would see at any construction area or or hard gravel. Um, I forget what the what the grade of it is, but it's a typical gravel access road that you would use to access in and out. Um, obviously, the with the um exit, there's already um power and infrastructure there that we can tap off of. That's the plan at this point in time anyways to um bring power to the site. We'll have to run fiber probably off of North Pottstown Park. As most of the carriers nowadays um utilize fiber also. The um. There's a culvert that we would. I I think you can look at it. If if I'm getting too technical on what I'm doing, just stop me and because I can run through this, but there's a culvert that we would use to access. There's a drainage, existing drainage, so we're not going to take away of any of that drainage that's already there. We'll just covert over it and put a steel grate and that's how they'll get from the existing parking field back to the site. Um. It it Tara, can you go to the overall just the? It it shows it a little bit better. There's some additional. That's just the survey that shows the various grades. I think it's the next one is their overall site plan. Yeah, there you go. Check that down just a little bit. That. Inside of that hundred by hundred-foot lease area would be a fenced-in probably seventy-five by seventy-five, and inside of that would be the tower and then room for the carriers to put their ground equipment, which includes the cabinets, backup generators, and anything that they would need to to run their particular center line. We added, based upon a couple comments, some shrubbery around the compound just. So it's a little camouflage back there. That fence line runs. There's a lot of big trees, so we didn't add anything there, although I did see a comment from your um engineer that said we might want to add some trees back there or some camouflage, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it's needed or or required. We're obviously work with whatever he thinks best. But that's pretty much it. It's it, you know, you you see these all over over towns. The reason why we're coming and 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 what we're do looking to do here is that this is capacity for the most part. It's going to provide some additional coverage to the south. I have to look at my propagation map. Um. But there's just too much activity, so the existing sites are getting overloaded. So every time you drive by or you're clicking your phone or getting an email while you're driving, going up a hundred or pots, is it Pottstown Park? Yeah, Pottstown Park.
Like.
Bike.
Yeah.
Um. The 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 site, the sites are just overloaded, you know, too many calls, too many text messages, too many five-year-olds watch watching cartoons as they're going to school. But that's what's that's what drives the site is we need we need more capacity to handle all the all the hits. We call them hits. You know, every time that somebody does something, gets a call, sends a text, does an email, downloads something while they're driving, driving by, that tower gets lit up. Hundred and sixty-foot would also allow Tilson to um serve other carriers, not just AT&amp;T, you know, Verizon saw a need and they had coverage or capacity issues or T-Mobile. Um. There'll be room for them also in this instance.
What's going to be my question, just like the difference between the one hundred and twenty feet to one sixty? What is that extra forty feet?
Well, it it remember the
What is it?
The the higher you go, the the better, bigger and better is basically you get a little bit more. We can do it this one twenty for T-Mobile or for AT&amp;T, but the rest of the carriers are going to look at that and come down and say, okay, so I got twelve feet of separation between each antenna array, so a center line. So if if we do this at one twenty and we have to put a five-foot or ten-foot um lightning rod on the top, now we're down to one-ten maybe because we have to be below that, so our frequencies don't mess around with anything. And then the next carrier's got to be twelve feet below that as their center line, then you know, this hill down the road here comes into play. You know, how how do you get coverage to or the capacity in the next site down the road? So.
So the
When you look at the when you look at the overall scope of things, the they have to be able to, the network has to work. So if the network in this one site goes like this and all of a sudden it drops down here, it's not going to work efficiently.
Right, yeah. No, I was just trying to understand what the extra forty feet outside of um. Yeah, the
It's it it it's to have the potential ability to service all the carriers.
So it's a potential.
Correct.
Do you have a map showing the different like thresholds or?
I I I've asked them to do that. We're com- we're in a preliminary stage right here and I don't have to show if I show you a propagation uh at a hundred and twenty and show you at one forty, it's probably not going to change a whole heck of a lot. It will. I can show. I have one at one-twenty that I can share and show you what it looks like. There's not a heck of a lot of difference for coverage-wise, but capacity-wise, this this is going to take a lot of from the next one down the road.
So it's a capacity of servicing other providers, then it's not really
Yeah.
as much as a as much as a a reach of a diameter.
Correct. This is this is being driven more so on a capacity level than a coverage level. You have, we have coverage driving up and down. You all have coverage when you go to school, work, wherever. Um, the the issue becomes when there's at rush hour or in the, you know, if there's a sporting event or something and there's eighty people in within a mile and they got two hundred and forty devices and they're all hitting that one tire tower at the same time.
Is AT&amp;T dependent on one sixty or would they still build it if it was one-twenty?
Well, again, that that that's going to be up to to you, and I I have to ask that question. I certainly wouldn't say no, we wouldn't, but there again, here here's my thought process is if we build at one-twenty, we might be the only carrier on that tower. I don't think that's an effective way to manage all your needs for everything. If you do one, it's it's like where I come from upstate New York, Dad, we're on that park. They got three towers sitting next to each other because they don't want it too far above the tree line. Well, nobody walks around going like that. They have it just, they don't. So if you can consolidate everything and put have it available for all the carriers, emergency management, police, whatever, that tends to make the most sense in the long run. So sorry, I didn't answer your question yes or no, but.
You don't know, that's fine. You're you're just here on behalf of them. Um. I do have one other question, if you guys don't mind. The other um variance, it looks like you guys are looking for is a set back variance. Tara, what is the or um John, what, Dan, sorry?
Okay.
So so that one section of our ordinance says that any tower or pole needs to be one and a half times the height that back from a public road or driveway.
Correct. So which is applicable here?
Well, it is in the right of way.
Oh, okay.
All of it.
All of it, okay. I wasn't sure if you were counting the roadway or that property line or just all all of it, okay?
It is in the right of way, um, and it is next to a property line and next to
Okay.
the roadway.
Okay.
Um, we did apply that to the last cell tower that we did, which was the one Hankin came through with a couple years ago. Um.
Meaning a variance was granted or was not granted?
It was granted.
Okay.
Um. And the tower that they constructed, they also got a variance for it to be a hundred and fifty feet in height.
Was that a similar situation with adding additional companies?
I believe they have the ability to have at least one other carrier on there, if not two.
It just if I can add something just to add to your question, the the A and E firms that will design this, the tower and foundation drawings that come after the fact, they can design a breakpoint so we can you you got a ninety-nine point nine percent guarantee that's not gonna if somehow we had a catastrophic tornado here, that's not going to land in anywhere close to the thruway or the highway.
He's not breaks away.
Yeah, that's it. That was my thing. When it falls, yeah, puts it a fire. So.
Yeah.
They have break.
They 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 have a uh, these are designed in sections. I'm not an engineer, so don't hold me accountable here, but they can design it so that if it falls, it's falling like this instead of you know, one big hunk of steel coming down.
Okay.
So. I've never seen one come down, but I don't also don't want to be around for that.
Videos on.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Tara, Tara, how how tall was the Hankin? Hundred and fifty, you said?
With the lightning? Sorry.
They may not have a lightning rod.
Are we counting, are we counting the lightning rod on this in the hundred and sixty here? No, no, so.
So it'd be one-seventy if we added a lightning rod?
He he's got a ten-foot. Eight months here. I haven't seen one that big. That's an awful big lightning rod.
Oh, I thought you said ten feet.
Ten somewhere. He's got a ten-foot one on here.
So he has a ten.
That's how he designed it. I'm going to ask him the question why, because.
So you typically see four feet?
Uh, we've been doing four feet in New York for over five years now. I haven't seen one, so I don't know if there's a reason of. Again, I'm not an engineer, so I it sometimes I have to ask those questions just to, he might have a perfectly good reason why he wants a ten-footer. I'm just not sure what it is.
I'm not ready.
Uh, is it, would this be the only tower in the area that you're associated with, or are there other towers in the general vicinity that?
I've been hired to do this project right now.
And you you have no knowledge of the other towers that are in the in the area as far as the the height?
I drove by. I looked at.
For the carriers.
Yeah.
I hope there's other eight.
One over on Gordon.
Yeah.
That looks awful.
Looks awful.
Great. We're glad you agree.
Already been there for a long time, but things have gotten a lot better.
It's the is the one sixty the, I'm assuming that's a higher height than what's been built historically, not necessarily in this area, but just in general.
No.
Higher height, okay. So one sixty would.
That's actually considered a fairly small tower.
Andrew.
We. Anything if you I I heard somebody mention a light or something, so FAA will tell you that you can build up to a hundred and ninety-nine feet. Anything over one ninety-nine requires a beacon at the top, and that's generally for flight traffic.
This is random. We have a lot of hot air balloons happening around here.
They were just out this past weekend.
What's that?
They were just out.
I saw.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. I don't know where they could fly off from, but so one ninety-nine, you there would, you would need to put something up there. It's, we'll have to be careful. Um. And I'm just curious how this works because I'm learning a lot. This is fascinating. Sorry, everyone. So my questions are more just like understanding how this works. Um, so if it's an AT&amp;T tower that you all are.
So it's Tilson Infrastructure is going to be the owner.
Okay, and then you lease it or you lease this?
AT&amp;T will lease space from Tilson.
Tilson, okay.
It typically, we don't come into a into a municipality to build something unless there's already been an agreement with a carrier to. Most municipalities aren't going to let you build something on spec.
Makes sense. So what like how do you, if you're building capacity for other carriers and you get and but you already are working with AT&amp;T, do you reach out to other carriers?
Also, and that's how they make their money during the business of leasing space to carriers.
Okay, that.
They're all over the country.
Okay. So I mean, if we're doing, if we agree to this, it's because it's for the good of the township and and our residents are going to get better service. Ideally, we're going to have like a broader coverage for the carriers that our residents in theory use like T-Mobile or Verizon or the main characters.
Theoretically, yes, if all the if all the other carriers came and and participated, everyone would have better coverage. At this point right now, AT&amp;T is the only one signed up.
Okay.
But.
Makes them want to join now because.
Typically, they follow. They 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 have the same issue. So there's only so many cell towers in in your township, correct?
Okay.
So, but you know, the one I saw over here on Gordon was loaded. That means if everybody's there, chances are they're going to want want to go to that one because they're having the same problem if they're if they're any good. And right now, there's only three big players.
Yeah.
AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile.
And so it did, what makes a carrier want to build a tower, I guess, and I'm sure you.
They don't, none of them build towers any longer. They don't know real estate. They're so this, like I said, they either have a capacity issue. So these RF engineers, radio frequency guys, sit back and that's all they do all day long is look at the network and say, okay, I'm and they they have these little computers and it it does a site and it shows like a, if you're looking at like a keyboard or something, you know, the guy that runs the knobs for the hand and it goes like this. And all of a sudden it'll go like this and they say, oh, there's about ten drop calls right there. So then they circle that and say, let's see what happens next month and if it happens the same time and what's the trend? So if they get enough of those things where they're going up here and spiking, then they they call me and say, go go find us something.
So is it a mix of like complaints then and proactive?
Complaints, people call, you know, the the you'll you'll have the ver- I I do most of my work for Verizon, but anyways, they they, we have Verizon's vice presidents calling our RF engineers because he's out on his boat on Skinny Atlas Lake and he can't talk to anyone. It's like, build a tower is like, where? In the middle of the ocean?
Figure it out.
Yeah. So capacity or coverage? So if you have no coverage, which we have pretty good coverage, actually, if you drive up and down, you typically won't get a drop call unless there's been that big influx that we were talking about where everything, everybody's overloaded and they can't transfer to anywhere else, so it just doesn't accept it.
Is it mostly residential or like a business use?
I have no, I I I put in the answer, it's probably a combination of both.
Okay.
Is it, I mean, there's a lot of traffic that runs up and down this road every day.
You know.
Sorry.
No, I'm kidding. That's helpful. Thank you.
Now, oh, go ahead, Rich. I was just, I have a question for Tara. Has um, what does Hankin think? Because it borders Hankin's property. What do they think about? It, how close is it? It must be, it it appears to be very close.
I haven't heard.
So they haven't objected uh because we don't know what they're going to be. They did, okay.
We spoke with Neil and talked to him about it.
Yeah, we told Neil about it and he didn't bat an eye about it.
Because we don't know what they're they're going to build there eventually, and it could be, how close is it to their property line?
It's very, very close.
Yeah, it looks like it's um.
Their next are turn.
That's what he's next.
Looked at like they're doing a scene.
Ten, twenty feet.
I don't know.
Wow.
From that's from the fence.
Oh, is that Hankin?
Eighty feet from the tower.
Hmm.
Eighty, eighty.
So they're to the southwest.
Yeah, that property to the southwest of, yeah, with the reason that's Eagleview Crossing. And that's it. That's the um hold the sack at the end of the.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah.
That that piece there.
So that that.
Their plans for development there?
They told them, they told me there was. I try, I tried to.
Okay, are there approved plans?
Do something.
No, not 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 at this.
No, not for that portion of the site right there. So there's some grading going on and they're going to concern seats of activity over there, but they're just bringing some fill-in uh right now for future development. Um, uh, but there's not, there's not an approved land development plan for that. That tracks of Eagleview Crossing there, so.
So as long as they're notified, I think I'm fine with that, you know, as long as.
Fine, there's a conditional use hearing scheduled for Monday night at the Board of Supervisors meeting and then the zoning hearing scheduled for the twentieth. So they've been notified twice.
And it can't be residential, right? Since that's also zone P, PIC or what's some, one of those.
Yeah.
That's.
I'm for.
No, that's.
Oh, I thought that.
What? Eagleview Crossing, he's asking, asking if that's not going to be.
There's no, there's no possibility of any residential there. No, no, not with that current, not with the current zoning, no.
It doesn't mean they won't ask for it.
Well, that's.
It's it's a prime location right there off of our property. It's probably going to be most valuable for commercial property, but you never know when Hankin Group's going to come in, so.
Is there any need for fire, police, or any of that to add on to this tower or all those communications?
Yeah, did those go through the tower? I had that question, so.
They they will review this during the during the land development process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, well, they could put an office.
Ability for that.
They could put an office building on it or something. They could, they could do that.
What what would happen if the fire?
The tower itself, if you're asking.
Right, it's out, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that happen, right? Uh, ability for the local.
It it, I I wouldn't say it never happens, but it's it's not a typical.
Charge too much.
Most municipalities tell us it's just that, you know, they say, how about it, you know, before the vote?
So wait, what does that entail then? Does that mean they get their own, their own like threshold?
Yeah, I mean, as a condition of approval here, if the.
Wouldn't be anywhere close to the top.
They could go.
Jeez.
Thirty-foot range.
Yeah. About the bottom, I mean.
Wow.
I mean, county manages all the emergency service um uh.
I usually have their own towers. I don't.
Right, yeah, I I honestly, I know there's a tower at, you know, a dispatch center, but I don't know.
But the the they, you know, the ambulances and the police and all those guys that have cell phones, they use them all the time. This.
Right.
It 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 does help. We've 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 heard.
Yeah, sometimes cell phones are used quite awful.
Right, I'd like to see the maps. I think the maps would tell a little bit more of a story of like we're speaking about, like the the thresholds and the capacities without that.
It's not going to, the the propagation map won't won't show a capacity. It'll show a coverage. That's all, that's the only thing a a map's going to show you is the is what, if if we have more antennas right here, what's the difference in the coverage?
So your guys out there collecting data don't record how much capacity hits?
Again.
How to measurement device, I guess?
They probably, they probably could, but you and I looking at, I mean, I wouldn't have any idea what I was looking at, to be honest with you. I'm not an engineer.
I would imagine it's time of day and traffic on the turnpike going behind it as well as picking up a lot of.
I don't, I don't know how they could do that, to be honest with you.
Well, you could do it by like, like what he was saying, you can do it as a time interval. And you'll see it obviously drop off in the middle of the day and then peak back up, obviously with the two rush hours.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. You know.
What's everybody's consensus? I I feel it's give them a go ahead. And then they got to go, this is just the first first step. So they got a couple, quite a few steps to go.
Hey, Dennis.
But, yes.
I I I think it would be a good idea here. If there's a couple key points in my letter, I don't get a chance to review it. I'm happy to hit those key points here, but I think it'd be a good thing for you guys to to consider, or we get the applicant to kind of maybe respond to. So if you're if you're up for it, I'm happy to take the lead and kind of run through the key key items in there. I think it's worth asking a couple of questions worth asking about.
Okay.
Okay.
I I would appreciate that.
Okay. Um, so I'm 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 literally, you have my August thirtieth letter?
I do.
Okay, so I'm just going to run through um letter here, page right page, but I'm going to skip over the ones that are are important here or that are just the big picture type of stuff. Um. So fence, uh, Tara, the uh, the fence height, is there any issue with the fence height in the yards? Because it's in the right of way. I don't think it's acceptable.
Um, no, because it's not more than six feet high.
Okay. Um.
I know, sorry.
The uh, the height regulations and the, I I think a condition of approval, my recommendation to you guys would be if you were going to look to move it forward would that they would incorporate in, I'll ask the question, do the break where your 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 break points within the poles, that ways incorporated into the project? Or is like, is that a standard feature or is that a condition that these guys should recommend based upon the proximity of to the near property?
No, we just go get this ass, ask them to.
Okay, so I think it probably had that as a condition of approval for recommendation for you guys, that there's a breakpoint in the pole um to be sufficient, that's not going to impact. That there's a breakpoint in the pole, um, to be sufficient, that's not gonna impact both the turnpike. And or the adjoining property for whatever is out there next, next door. That's like a comment number three to tie back into the height, um, separating from the distance. They have noted that there's three additional, my comment number four A, three additional pana, panel antenna arrays are reserved for future carriers. Which I think they already talked about, um, evergreen screening. Um, so my comment about the evergreen screening on comment four B. Is, uh, I recommended that they offset instead of, instead of having a, um, a, a straight line, um. Of the trees, you offset those to give some more root for growth. Um, and the second part of it is we don't know what's gonna happen on the adjoining property. The screening that's out there now. Is on the adjoining property, um, uh, we thought it would be beneficial to end up having on that, uh, southern property line. Additional screening added, my, was my recommendation.
Dan, can I add to four A before, just because this is the part that at mentions the local police, fire, ambulance? So could we ask for a condition of use that that be included on a lower rung?
Um, yeah, I, I think that ultimately here, I think if needed, um, I mean, if.
Needed, yeah.
If the emergency service personnel doesn't feel like there's a need for that, I mean, you're taking away, I mean, my personal opinion, you're taking away revenue from them if you earmark a spot. For that, um, there's only so much space.
I think that's.
And the ground is to do all the equipment too. So I don't know if, if we could ask, um, if that would be my bonus to ask maybe the, uh, the county to see if there's a need for additional coverage in this area for their, their, their services.
Okay.
So.
If needed, thank you.
Um, comment number five is license is in applicable regulations, um, so eventually it'll end up having to, uh. Um, provide, I guess they said within fifteen days of the submission of the application for conditional use or other missable approval. Do you have your, um, FCC, um, uh, license requirements established for that or is that happening in a certain date? So the, the ordinance spells out, the applicant must demonstrate it, it is licensed to provide.
That's a normal.
And then I guess that's a license for you guys to do this, to do this work. It's not a license for this particular, particular, um, facility.
Unveil the telecommunication.
Okay. Proven inspection, so they'll end up having to note in the plan about number, comment number six on top of page three, um, it's just notes. Um, comment number seven is visual appearance, um, so, uh. Communication antenna support structures be painted green up to the height of the nearby trees and or. Um, so there's certain criteria about the, the look of what this is supposed to be and what you, um, so they're supposed to be painted. Silver or another color approved by the board or shall have a galvanized finished. So I think from your point of view here, um, I'm on my planning commission down in East Ocean and they put one on Paoli Pike at township property. And we had a big debate on the color of it, um, they actually picked because of, there's some low trees in the area, but. Um, how that was set up here, they actually, we actually picked, um, a mountain sky or some color, like a whiter color that would blend in. And we had the discussions that we had with that was, well, what color is gonna be hidden most and what's gonna look like? I just don't know from that viewpoint here, what's best to hear, if it's galvanized finish should be best, if there should be something else. From a different color, color point of view here, but you guys can look at and make recommendations for that. Um, uh, whether or not there's something that should be from a color point of view here, what the visual appearance should be. Um, so I don't, sure, that's probably that's your attention that you have the right to, to do that. Um, lighting, so we have a note from, uh, from, um. Uh, FA, they actually came in here, Tara, provided with today, basically saying that they don't need lights on this facility. Um, so that, I think that comment number eight isn't, uh, I think that's, isn't that what this letter states there? That they don't need lights, that what this was? Um, so that's comment number eight, comment number nine is related to maintenance, um. So applicants shall describe anticipated maintenance needs, including frequency of service, personnel needs, equipment needs. And the traffic safety of the notice of impacts of such maintenance. Um, shall be part of a conditional use application or application for zoning and building authorization. This is just your planning commission here, um, you can obviously discuss that, but as part of the conditional use. You're gonna have to go on record and state what your maintenance requirements are, um, how, what, maybe the planning commission would like to hear now, what your. What, what happens from maintenance point of view here? How often are people out here?
Certainly working on that first construction and in effect comes out just enough and. And just make sure that everything's working. But most of it can be done, uh, renewable now, but you know, there's some down, radio down. Need something maintenance wise, typically once a month per carrier.
Right.
Go ahead.
No, then.
Uh, do we require like a maintenance agreement for the screening that's, that's being proposed or required? Like if a tree dies and they're required to replace it?
Um, I think if it goes on the approved plan, that would be a requirement that stays. Yes, so yes, that would be part of the approved plan. So if there's a, a blight for that type of tree. White pines that are being put in there and they all die and they're gonna have to find a replacement.
Didn't know if there was any like, um, camera that, um. If there's a disturbance or something that's tripped or that you all get alerted or anything like that, monitoring system. Or.
They're braided wire.
Okay. Right, there's fencing and, okay.
You said it's six foot chain link fence around the bottom of wire.
Wire.
So you'd have to basically climb over that wire to get into that to, to, to do anything.
Gotcha, okay. Everything's monitored these days. I just.
You're basically coming in with one vehicle, uh, per month, per carrier, basically going in and checking stuff and that's the extent of it here. What's the kind of maintenance it needs on the pole? Um, is there, what, what kind of maintenance needed on the pole or longevity of it here? Um, I mean, these things get destroyed damage. Do they ever have a problem with it?
Yes, I mean. I don't know the exact answer to that question, but I, I mean, some of these things that are on for forty, fifty year, um. I mean, see, it says maintenance, it gets checked out. We have climbers that go up. Every year pretty much because we're swapping out new technology with the radios and the antennas. So there's. We run a structural analysis every time we, we change equipment, just to make sure everything's in line. So if there's a bolt loose, they, they fix the bolt. There's these, again, these are, these, this, what, what's being, or where is it, is a model? There's no legs, there's old guy, bar, none of that stuff. It's, it's a fairly simple building and it's stacked. Not a whole lot can go wrong.
Um, the next item is related to co-location, um. The applicant shall demonstrate, this is comment number ten on top of page four, the applicant shall demonstrate that it is contacted the owners of structures of suitable locations and heights. Such as smokestacks, water towers, buildings, blah, 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 other tennis support towers within a one mile radius of the site proposed. Um, and ask permission to install that. I understand that obviously Tilson is a supplier of this. You're not operating, if you're not AT&T, who's basically trying to find somewhere else, you're trying to have a business model to, to build these. But is there a reason why like banking group has one on their property? That's probably the nearest location. Um, over in the Eagleview development here and, uh, I believe there's only one user on that. Um, uh, right, obviously, um, is there a reason AT&T couldn't go on that versus worse?
Look at, uh, at, at the existing sites that AT&T has now. You can't get too close to one and I had about half mile ring that I could go to. The Hankin property was one of them, they said no thanks.
But that, but that's, that's for putting up a new tower, but they have a hundred fifty foot tower.
Yeah, but it was too close to another site, it must be. You can't, the, the network doesn't work if you have two things.
That map would be helpful too, I think, in addition to.
It sounds like that would preclude bringing other tenants to your.
Yeah, it's a answer.
If there's only three major carriers and.
Oh, yeah, you got some bad dish. That there are three major carriers.
Yeah, I mean. That, that obviously a question here whether or not going on a tower for an AT&T to build their gap, they go on that and I don't think you have a, a, an answer on that here at this point.
Do we know, uh, who the carrier is on Hankins?
I don't.
I think it's. Well.
So it's, 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 it's not that far away. It's, it's across Route one hundred on the southern end of their, of their tracks. Into the, off into the woods there, so not, um, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty close from.
But like in Eagleview?
Yeah.
Do we know the, who the owner of that?
Hankin.
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 Hank, oh, it's Hankin built it and, oh.
Hankin basically, I, I don't know.
I thought they were.
They're, they're, they're the one who generate revenue from that. I don't think there's another Tilson type company that built it for them, what that deal is.
But it's second.
They, they leased the land for that and, and obviously the more carriers go on that, the more money they make, but. I just, more so than anything else is, I assume AT&T, I mean, basically, could they happen to go on that? And I don't think we have a clear answer on that.
Gotcha.
Um, comment number eleven is abandonment, um, so there are requirements that will go on the plan, uh, plan here. Um, that if the facility is no longer used because of whatever reason, they have to remove that. So that's just a standard, standard requirement here. Um, so notifications, um, uh, I guess notifications have been taken care of here, Tara. For the, um.
Yes, they were, yes.
Okay.
Abiding properties were notified for the hearing.
And also that three hundred foot radius of those communications.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, applicant will require document that the project will comply with plan criteria, standard care, multiple, very. Right, so then, then there's gonna be a certain criteria that's gonna fall through that they, um, they'll have to provide to us during a later stage for comment number thirteen. A comment number fourteen, um, is dealing with the maximum heights. Um, and, uh, we, we already talked about here. Uh, comment number fifteen on page five, appearance. Um, again, back to the galvanized, uh, the, the section talks about galvanized. And or painted with a rust prevent, uh, preventative paint of appropriate color to harmonize with the surroundings. Comment number sixteen is the gap in coverage, um. The, uh. Ultimately here, they need to, um, show that there's the gap in coverage here. I would strongly recommend here that you, uh, come prepared for the conditional use hearings. To show the needs for that and have those appropriate maps, uh, documentations to show, um, to demonstrate that there is a significant gap in wireless coverage. Um, and, and need for this.
Is that, is that just related to gap, like coverage gap or can I be capacity too? Or is it just our ordinance, the gap?
This ordinance.
Okay, okay.
So. And it says the existence or non-existence of a gap in wireless cover shall be a factor in determining the township decision from, of an application for approval. Um, so it's, 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 it's just, it's not something you could deny for, but I think it's just something to be considering. Now that, how the ordinance is right there. Uh, co-location, um. A, an applicant for, um, a new facility here shall, uh. Shall not be approved unless the township finds that the proposed wireless communications permit cannot be accommodated on an existing structure. Back to our past discussion here, um, whether or not they could have, could fall on another, one of the other existing structures to accommodate this. So I think it's puts back on the applicant's responsibility to approve that. Um, design regulations, um. So there will be, uh, current stealth technology available to appropriately lens. So on this tower, you're gonna end up having, you have a monopole and then you have, um, it comes out from the outside of them. My, my lack of knowledge of this, but are there ones that actually are hidden inside of the pole? Are those stuff that, that technology that's still being utilized?
One, in this case.
Okay.
If you're only gonna put one or two antennas.
Okay.
It doesn't significantly limits the ability for the network to.
Um, and then the conditional use criteria is attached on the back of this, um, back of the review letter here that talks about. General conditional use items, um, we can jump and see if they are. Uh, stormwater, there are increasing impervious coverages, um, associated with the project here. They're gonna have to do some type of stormwater management to comply with the stormwater ordinance. Um, so you'll end up having inefficiency in your pulver, um, you're gonna have to do stormwater design to mitigate the impacts for that driveway. The whole like pervy side, pervy services on site. Um, erosion controls during, during construction is comment number two on page six to six. Access, um, so, uh. Yeah, it's a part of my question here. You have a twelve foot gravel driveway, uh, coming through a parking lot area. If, I don't know what those parking spaces are used for, uh, for my, uh, turnpike, uh, turnpike point of view here, but. Um, you're probably, I'd hate to have emergency, you need to get up there and your car parked in that area. So we're gonna ask that the, uh. The turnpike, um, stripe off or bore off the one parking space there, um, that is, uh. Here where the driveway comes down, so a car doesn't park there and now all of a sudden you can't get in, you can't get across into the access to the site if there's an emergency. Um, and then utilities, uh, just your, your plan, current plan right now shows utilities. As it to be determined or whatever you show coming down here, um, so my comment number four is to, to, uh, to, to make sure you depict that. The plan shows an abandoned sewer line that runs up through this, through this area here, um. I think it needs coordinate with the sewer department here to see what that sewer line was and just to make sure that it's abandoned.
I think the turnpike folks were.
Okay. So that, those are like the key items in the letter here, the conditional use criteria, um, a lot of that's not, um. It's a lot of it's just general nature stuff dealing with conditional use applications. The applicant is gonna have to during the conditional use hearings. Go through that criteria, go on record about, about this and, and state, uh, for the, for the, for the, for the hearing itself. Um, that the, um, that the proposed use since that's big, uh, public interest, sure of the public health, safety, well, morals, general welfare. All the other criteria associated with the, the conditional use that they'll have to, have to, uh, have the state to go on record for. Um, but those are some of the key things I think that, uh, you guys should consider or we're looking at the top patients.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention one thing, going back to the, uh.
Yes.
Hankin Tower, I think that's internal, those were internal to, if I recall on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So it, it may, it may.
Eagleview.
It may be significant because of what, uh, Mr. I got your name, Horson, Morrison said about, you know, limited the capacity. Of the tower by having the more internal rather than the external.
Yeah, I, I don't know which tower is referring to. But when they have an issue of capacity, first thing that they can do would be to look. Is there anything close by that portion and that, you know, not gonna spend a million and a half dollars if we don't have. So be that as it may, we'll figure that out, providing an adequate answer.
Okay.
We don't start these projects because.
I understand.
Just one, it's because they're in need.
Yes, understood.
Would not.
I get the need, but the maps would definitely go a long way. I'm a visual person, so if you can show. Either the gap coverage or the, the capacity, a way to visualize capacity or at least. Maybe it doesn't have to be a map, but just some type of data to show.
Good, yes.
Yeah. And we want to share it with residents who may ask and need to understand why, you know, we. Recommended that this or said this we could go through, so need the full picture. To answer those questions as well.
From a timing point of view here, the hearing is scheduled.
For Monday.
For Monday, but so, um, unfortunately, I know you'd love to have those maps and go there, but. The, the board would really need a recommendation from you one way or the other. I guess you could always condition your recommendation on review of those gap coverages and make sure that. Staff and supervisors basically ensure that those, those items are addressed, um, here, the need for this is, is there. Basically ensure that those, those items are addressed um here. The need for this is, is there. Um, you could also turn around and say you don't have information and you don't support the application or you uh. Um, however you want to end up, end up doing that here, but those are, those are your options here for that. Um, but unfortunately with the timing and the. And everything else, I think uh a decision's probably here tonight from uh, from, from you guys, one way or the other, so.
Okay, more than a month.
So the other comments? Wasn't?
No. I mean, I.
You're the public. And comment.
Now's the time that I should ask for the public comment.
Correct.
Anybody in the audience had any comment? On what's in front of the. Planning Commission? Could you please stand, state your name and?
Hi, Mary Ann Masiri. Uh, I'm. Uh, interested in knowing if there's.
Go closer so we.
I'm interested in knowing if there is any way to camouflage this tower so it doesn't look. Ugly. Uh, I have seen some look like evergreens. And I don't know if that's something that's feasible.
That was.
I would think that's covered on the Esther Daley's.
Comment.
Different painting or different colors. And that, um.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that makes it look better actually or worse. Um. Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't think I'd support that.
It's, it's a matter of preference. Um, I mean, hundred and sixty foot tree still looks. There, I'm, I'm, I'm sure my personal opinion on that. Um, here, I think you look at it from a color point of view here is, is really what you would. Um, I, I think could maybe consider here. Um, uh, but I, I personally am not a fan of the ones that look like the branches coming off of the trees and. And it just doesn't, you don't see, I mean, we're not in the redwood forest here where you're a hundred and sixty foot high. Evergreen tree that's sticking up out of the ground here.
That great.
I'd be interested in knowing the recommendations, those specific color recommendations, and that's something I would like to add to the, that, um. You know, that we get the, those. Colors. Um, and then ask that, that, that be applied to it. For the visual appearance.
That is in your recommendations.
Uh, my recommendation is that it should be reviewed here with the planning commission and the, um, and the board of supervisors as part of this application here. So I think that at this point here. I mean, uh, I guess your intention, if you were not, had a restricted requirement to put on here, are you putting a galvanized steel up or it gets, that's what you would do on like here?
Let's into the environment. Ever the first.
Don't.
So not to be crude, we can basically let the board supervisors handle that aspect of it.
Um, yeah, and unless you had a recommendation for saying here, I wanna, I'd like to, I think it'd be nice to put it a bright pink. Was. So, um, but you know what I mean? But that, that, that'd be, yeah, you can end up turning around and then the board make that decision or you can turn around and make a recommendation to the board for their consideration, so.
Just like to recommend to the board that they inquire. I'm interested in what you had said, if there was like, you know, up to X feet, it's. Colored with landscape and then it's galvanized above and.
I do sky above.
Or the whatever sky color.
Looking up at it.
That. You had talked about, so I would at least like to see what other townships have found to be the, they're recommended and I would like to find that out. So I'd recommend that our. Board of supervisors find out. What West White Land or what?
East, I was in East Goshen.
East Goshen.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or a township engineer can find out.
I, I'm pretty sure it was, I think, called like Mount Fist. It was like a whitish, like an off white color, like kind of blending with the sky is what was chosen, so.
Sounds pretty.
Mountain.
It sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
How, how often do you pay, paint your poles? You do that often or not?
If, if it's galvanized, you probably don't paint it, right? Yeah.
Is, is it, I mean, did fifty percent of your poles painted or hundred percent of yours galvanized steel or you do?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Hundred percent.
It's, it's a maintenance nightmare because somebody's gonna chip it. Climb in.
Oh, I think that.
Paying my shirt and it's fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with galvanized.
Well, we'll let the board supervisors make that decision.
Yeah.
Yes.
Dan, it does say.
I would be fine with galvanized as long as it blends in with landscape.
It does, yeah.
Goes into the sky.
Sorry, Dan, it says. The, with the gap in coverage, an applicant for a tower based. WCF must demonstrate that a significant gap in wireless coverage exists, so they, they owe something.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they say that and then the existence or non-existence of a gap in wireless cover shall be a factor in the township decision on application for approval. Of the tower based WCF or in, in the right way, so. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, they're, they're ultimately here need to prove during the conditional use hearing that they have that gap in coverage. You guys are a planning commission here, you're making recommendations, you're not approving it.
Right.
That's a condition here that. That you feel strongly about here that if you're not gonna, if, if, if they haven't proved that to you, you can turn around and say I don't have enough information, I don't support the application.
Understood, but, but I agree with the man submitting it. They're not gonna spend millions of dollars to put a pole up that they don't have to.
Understood, but I mean, like, anybody come in and tell me these sunglasses are worth three hundred dollars, but. Unless.
What's the concern with, with coverage? I mean, I, I don't, I guess I'm not as concerned.
I just don't want to. Like, uh, just. He's just coming in and telling me I'm a data person, so I'm, I like to look at things and know what he's saying is, is. I'm not, I'm not saying that you're a liar or anything, but I just want to see the data that shows that we need this tower in this area.
I support that. I think that's a legitimate question, like to approve something and. Again.
Like a giant warehouse coming in, you know, is there evidence that, you know, we need this warehouse to come in kind of thing? What's gonna go in there? What do, what does Euclid benefit from? This tower going in?
Our residents, I want to be able to say to our residents that this is beneficial to our township and to the residents of the township. Um, and here's why, because there's a gap in coverage and this is gonna fill the gap. I think.
If it costs one point five million, it. It costs.
Or a capacity.
Capacity then. This was obviously written back in the day when, you know, it was more of gap in coverage. Now we're, we have to change the code to, to capacity. Or add that as a, another item, but because, you know, technology changes.
Yeah. I think that's a crazy question.
And at this point, I mean, you're valid, valid point and yeah, it would be great if the, if the applicant had the ability to come in and prevent, prevent that data, they don't. So at this point here, you're gonna make a decision if you want to support it with a condition that that be looked at and refuted here by the board supervisors. Or you're saying I don't have enough information and I'll support the application.
That's what I'm saying, and that's what I would vote for right now. Does anybody else from the public have any comments? No?
No, we only asked that.
Okay.
At this point. We need to decide how we want to handle this. Um, Rich, how's your feeling?
I'm in favor of uh moving it forward.
I'm in favor.
With condi, with the one condition though, that, that's not in the letter here, that the uh tower is built with break points. I think that was on, everything else I think is covered. In the uh. EB Walsh letter. So compliance with the EB Walsh letter and. A tower that would have. Break points as not to affect the surrounding properties. Tor road. That, that's, that's what I would uh. Agree to.
Okay, downline, I'm in favor for letting them move forward. Nope.
Nope.
Nope. Leslie?
I don't have more information is necessary.
Um, I. I'm in support of uh building it with the EB Walsh letter, um, the breakpoint. And on the condition that we have information about gap and capacity coverage. That's what I'm recommending to the board.
Okay.
You're changing his motion now. If he's making.
So you can make the motion. No, I didn't make the. I, I didn't make the motion. I said I would be, that's what I would agree, so Lindsay, why don't you make the motion with that?
I don't wanna make a motion.
It's just what you said.
Um, the, okay, so.
So it's right here.
My motion includes. Um. Okay.
The last thing, yeah.
Um. Okay, so. The. Hmm, seriously, I don't know how to say it. Sorry, say it.
I'll do it and then you can add your condition.
I'm doing just that.
Okay, I have.
But, yeah.
Right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that uh. That planning commission, uh. Do we recommend conditional, to recommend this project for conditional use? Okay, recommend this for conditional use.
Support this condition.
We support.
Patient.
This, the conditional use application. Um.
And, and if it's. Tara, any endeavor support for the variant or not?
Hmm.
It, I guess it would include the.
Variance is covered in the letter though, I think that. So pursuant to EB Walsh's letter dated. August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. As well as the obtaining variances from the zoning board commission as required. And also that the, that the uh tower will be built with break points in the pole, that's not to affect the surrounding properties of the road. And that the applicant provide adequate. Evidence of. Uh, the need for. Capacity and coverage or.
That the, a gap. In capacity or coverage exists in this township or in this area.
Sufficient evidence that there's uh. There's a gap.
A need.
It, a need to fill a gap. For capacity and coverage. All right, I'm done.
All right. I have a motion. Go have a second. Have a second? All in favor? Aye.
So we have. Just one.
Say aye.
With that.
With that. Wish the stipulation.
Okay.
So you're okay, so it's. So it's unanimous then?
It's unanimous. Got a recommendation.
Hey, good.
Okay. With that. We muddled through that.
Hope you can work with that.
Okay, with that, we'll move forward. That's our only uh thing on the agenda tonight. I do have announcements, uh, the board of supervisors. Workshop meeting, twelve PM on. September seventh, that was canceled, that was canceled. Nine eleven, September eleven, board of supervisors meeting, seven thirty here at the township building. And September twentieth, zoning hearing board, seven PM. Discussing two oh seven and overdrive side yard variance. And also Tilson infrastructure AT&T. And with that, do I have any other comment from the public discussion? Comment? Could you please stand? Thank you.
In regards to the uh board of supervisors meeting, uh, the noon meeting. Um, I also had, this is the second time that I could not access the Zoom meeting. Uh, I don't know, I know this is, this next meeting is being canceled, but is there any alternative? Are, are there notes to that meeting from August and July? Cause I've tried to get on the Zoom meeting for July. I was fifteen minutes delayed to getting on in July. In August, I couldn't get on at all. The Zoom meeting.
Um.
Like. Right. Workshop.
But she shouldn't have a problem accessing it. Yeah, that's either, it must, might be on your side of it, I.
Is it, do you have to let people in? Situation, I think, yeah.
But I couldn't get in and it actually noted on there that I couldn't have act, that, you know, whoever was trying to get on couldn't get on. And I was just curious if anybody else had an issue, but it's the second time and I'm on Zoom meetings like once a day.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's the.
They still.
Are you, are you able to view them on, on YouTube after? No?
I didn't know if they were recorded. So are they recorded?
Recorded and you.
I'm not sure if they were still down there.
Yeah.
There's a workshop, the workshop, the twelve o'clock meeting, they said, that's not, that's what I wanted to get information on.
But if you needed a copy of. Contact us when you need. So I could get the August meeting. Should be.
Yeah, not until, what she's saying is not until next month though, it's, it'd be a whole month.
No, but I mean, could I have August?
Once they're.
Once they're approved, approved.
That would be.
That's why.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Well, that one's up.
I took your question.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments for the good of the meeting? Any commission? If not. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for coming out. Good evening, drive safe.
Mr. Morrison, I uh. I think you just work with the.